Okay, we've called to order our meeting for an emergency meeting because of an additional case of COVID-19 in Tenny County. And so we are having this emergency meeting at 4:00 p.m. today because of that issue. So if we can get started, let's do the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are going to go ahead. We've got a bill that needs to be approved. So do I have a vote for?
I can make a motion that we have the first reading, Bill Number 525, which is the emergency stay-at-home ordinance due to the COVID-19 coronavirus outbreak.
A second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. First reading. We'll do the first reading. This is the Board of Aldermen, City of Forsyth, Missouri. Emergency stay-at-home ordinance due to COVID-19 coronavirus outbreak. Be it ordained by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Forsyth, Missouri as follows. Section 1 Stay-at-Home Order. Individuals may leave their residences or place of rest only to perform essential activities as defined herein or to provide any services or perform any work necessary to their operations and the maintenance of essential business. Minimum basic operations or other enumerated exempted categories is prescribed by city order or other prevailing law. People at risk of severe illness from COVID-19 are urged to stay in their residence or place of rest except as necessary to seek medical care and to obtain provision of essential life items. All individuals shall exercise physical distancing requirements at all times. The exemptions. All persons working for or to support essential businesses are categorically exempt from this order. Further, nothing in this order shall prohibit any individual from performing or accessing essential governmental functions. Essential governmental functions means all services needed to ensure the continuing operation of any government agencies, including schools, and provide for the health, safety, and welfare of the public. All essential governmental functions should be performed in compliance with physical distancing requirements as defined this section to extent possible. Section 2 Nonessential Business and Other Nonessential Operations Must Cease. All businesses and other operations in the city, except as defined herein as essential business or exempted by force of law or order, are required to cease all in-person operations. Nonessential businesses and other operations may continue operations consisting exclusively of employees, contractors, or other agents of businesses performing activities at their own residences or places of rest. All essential business activities shall carry out to the greatest degree possible, Centers for Disease Control recommended social distancing guidelines. Essential businesses may perform only those activities defined as an essential business and may not perform nonessential business activities. This order shall not apply to government agencies. Section 3 Definitions and Exemptions. Definitions for purposes of this section, the following terms will have the meaning ascribed to them. Essential activities, number 1, shall mean: to engage in activities or perform tasks essential to their health and safety or to the health and safety of their family or household members, including but not limited to pets; or to close personal acquaintances, such as by the way of example only and without limitation, obtaining medical supplies or medication, visiting a healthcare professional, or obtaining supplies they need to work from home; b, to obtain necessary services or supplies for themselves and their family or household members or close personal acquaintances; or to deliver those services or supplies to others, such as by the way of example only and without limitation; groceries and essential household goods and products, such as cleaning and personal care products and other products necessary to maintain the safety, sanitation, and essential operation of residences; c, to engage in outdoor activity, provided the individuals comply with physical distancing requirements as defined herein, such as by the way of example and without limitation, biking, walking, hiking, or running; d, to perform work providing essential products and services at an essential business, or to otherwise carry out activities specifically permitted in this order, including minimum basic operations as defined herein at nonessential businesses, and e, to care for a family member, close personal acquaintance, acquaintance or pet in another household. Essential businesses means any for-profit, nonprofit, or educational entity, regardless its corporate or entity structure, to the extent that a substantial element of its daily operations is included in the following activities: a) construction, including critical home and building repairs; b) healthcare and public health services and supply, manufacturing, and distribution, including mental health and home health services, blood, plasma, and donation and related activities; and pharmacies, but not including gyms and fitness centers. This should be construed broadly to avoid any impact to the delivery of healthcare; c) veterinary care and other healthcare services for animals, including boarding; d) food, shelter, and social services and other necessities of life for economically disadvantaged or otherwise needy individuals, such as those residing at shelters; e) mortuary services, including funeral homes, crematoriums, and cemetery workers, except that not more than 10 persons at a time shall be allowed into a funeral visitation or wake; f) home-based care for seniors, adults, or children; g) law enforcement, emergency management, public safety, first responder, emergency dispatch, and security; h) hazardous materials handling and cleanup; i) agriculture and food cultivation, including farming, livestock, and fishing; j) grocery stores, food banks, convenience stores, and other establishments engaged in the retail sale of canned food, dried goods, fresh fruit and vegetables, pet supply, fresh meats, fish and poultry, and other household products, such as cleaning and personal care products, provided that farmers markets and produce stands may provide drive-through or carryout services only. This includes stores that sell groceries and also sell other non-grocery products and products necessary to maintain the safety, sanitation, and essential operation of residences and persons, and includes the retail sale and distribution of alcohol. k) restaurant, carryout, drive-through, and delivery services. Drive-through and delivery services provided they are food services, pickup or take-away food services provided by a school, provided that no more than 10 people shall be within the establishment and physical distancing of a minimum of 6 feet is maintained. l) energy, electricity, petroleum, natural, and propane gas acquisition, production, generation, processing, storage, distribution, and retail distribution. m) waste and wastewater maintenance and operation of infrastructure, including processing, treatment, conveyance, and distribution. n) logistics and transportation of goods and people, including taxis, rental services, ride shares, and private transportation providers and businesses that ship or deliver foods, goods, or services directly to residences. o) freight transportation services, including railroads and rail systems. p) gas stations. q) vehicle repair and maintenance facilities, including vehicles, parts, manufacturers, and suppliers. r) public work support, inspection, and maintenance, including workers such as plumbers, electricians, exterminators, and other service providers, whose services are necessary to maintain safety, sanitation, and essential operation of residences and buildings, essential activities, and essential businesses. s) public infrastructure support and maintenance. t) communications infrastructure support and maintenance, including storefronts that sell or repair communication devices and media services, including radio, television, and print. u) information technology development, management, support, and security, including client service centers. v) inspection services for construction functions of new facilities and/or maintenance of existing buildings. w) hotels, motels, and bed and breakfasts, provided that they may not offer dining and services, and no more than 10 people shall be congregated in any one area, including the lobby area. x) critical manufacturing of materials and products needed for medical supply chains, transportation, energy, communications, food, and agriculture, to include food and beverage processing, wholesaling, storage, warehousing, and distribution; chemical manufacturing, water and wastewater treatment, emergency services in the defense industrial base. y) legal and critical financial services, including banks and property services, including supportive activities such as appraisals, title searches, and inspections. z) lawn and landscaping services and grass, weed, and vegetation removal necessary to protect the health, safety, and sanitation of the community. a) building supply stores. b) lawn or mats, dry cleaners, and laundry service providers. c) residential care facilities, including nursing homes and group homes. d) mailing and shipping services, including post office boxes. e) educational activities to support distance learning activities. f) childcare facilities providing services that enable employees exempted in this order to work as permitted to the extent possible. Childcare should be carried out in stable groups, preferably with 10 or fewer. Stable means that the same 10 or fewer children are in the same group each day. Children should not change from one group to another. If more than one group of children is cared for at one facility, each group should be in a separate room. Groups should not mix with each other, and childcare providers should remain solely with one group of children. g) religious activities to support distance and/or virtual services provided fewer than 10 persons are in. h) any business involving the possession, transfer, sale, transportation, storage, display, or use of firearms or ammunition. i) minimum basic operations of otherwise nonessential businesses, provided that employees comply with physical distancing requirements as defined herein in the extent possible while carrying out such operations and which shall be limiting to the following: a) the minimum necessary activities to maintain the value of the business's inventory and facilities, ensure security, process payroll and employee benefits, or other related functions; and b) the minimum necessary activities to facilitate employees of the business being able to continue to work remotely from their residences, place of rest, or elsewhere; three, direct support services necessary to ensure an essential business activity will not have to cease operation. Three. Physical distancing requirements includes maintaining at least a 6-foot physical distance from other individuals, washing hands with soap and water for at least 20 seconds as frequently as possible, or using hand sanitizer regularly, cleaning high-touch surfaces and not shaking hands. Section 4 Penalty for Violation. Any person who shall violate this section shall upon conviction or plea of guilty be fined not more than $199 or sentenced to a term of imprisonment for up to 10 days or both. Section 5 Effective Date, Duration, and Availability. This order shall be in effect at 12:01 a.m. on Sunday, March 29, 2020, and shall be in effect until modified or rescinded. The city clerk shall make this order available to the public. It's adopted and approved by the Board of Aldermen at an emergency meeting held on March 28, 2020, the City Hall in Forsyth, Missouri.
Motion to approve first reading. Second.
Roll call vote. Aye.
Aye.
Check. Okay.
Ready to second?
Second reading.
Motion to have the second reading of Bill Number 525, Emergency Stay-at-Home Ordinance Due to COVID-19 Outbreak. And enact. Second reading, and enact, Bill Number 525.
Second motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Greg, do you want to read the second time?
Yes. Is it all right if I stand up? Would you make me feel comfortable?
Yeah, yes.
Board of Aldermen, City of Forsyth, Missouri. Emergency stay-at-home ordinance due to COVID-19 coronavirus outbreak. Be it ordained by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Forsyth, Missouri as follows. Section 1 Stay-at-Home Order. A) Individuals may leave their residences or place of rest only to perform essential activities as defined herein or to provide any services or perform any work necessary to the operations and maintenance of essential business, minimum basic operations or other enumerated exempted categories as prescribed by city order or other prevailing law. People at high risk of severity illness from COVID-19 are urged to stay in their residence or place of rest except as necessary to seek medical care and to obtain provision of essential life items. All individuals shall exercise physical distancing requirements at all times. B) exemptions. All persons working for or to support essential businesses are categorically exempt from this order. Further, nothing in this order shall prohibit any individual from performing or accessing essential government functions. Essential government function means all services needed to ensure the continuing operation of any government agencies, including schools, and provide for the health, safety, and welfare of the public. All essential governmental functions should be performed in compliance with physical distancing requirements as defined in this section to the extent possible. Section 2 Nonessential Businesses and Other Nonessential Operations Must Cease. Letter A. All businesses and other operations in the city, except as defined herein as an essential business or exempted by force of law or order, are required to cease all in-person operations. Nonessential businesses and other operations may continue operations consisting exclusively of employees, contractors, or other agents of businesses performing activities at their own residences or places of rest. All essential business activities shall carry out to the greatest degree possible, Centers for Disease Control recommended social distancing guidelines. Essential businesses may perform only those activities defined as an essential business and may not perform nonessential business activities. This order shall not apply to government agencies. Section 3 Definitions and Exemptions. Letter A Definitions. For purposes of this section, the following terms will have the meaning ascribed to them. Number 1 Essential Activities Shall Mean: a) to engage in activities or perform tasks essential to their health and safety or to the health and safety of their family or household members, including but not limited to pets, or close personal acquaintances, such as by way of example only and without limitation, obtaining medical supplies or medication, visiting a healthcare professional, or obtaining supplies they need to work from home; b) to obtain necessary services or supplies for themselves and their family or household members or close personal acquaintances, or to deliver those services or supplies to others, such as by way of example only and without limitation, groceries and essential household goods and products, such as cleaning and personal care products and other products necessary to maintain the safety, sanitation, and essential operation of residences; c) to engage in outdoor activity, provided the individuals comply with physical distancing requirements as defined herein, such as by way of example and without limitation, biking, walking, hiking, or running; d) to perform work providing essential products and services at an essential business or to otherwise carry out activities specifically permitted in this order, including minimum basic operations as defined herein at nonessential businesses; and e) to care for a family member, close personal acquaintance, or pet in another household. Number 2 Essential Businesses means any for-profit, nonprofit, or educational entity, regardless its corporate or entity structure, to the extent that a substantial element of its daily operations is included in the following activities: a) construction, including critical home and building repairs; b) healthcare and public health services and supply, manufacturing, and distribution, including mental health and home health services, blood and plasma donation and related activities; and pharmacies, but not including gyms and fitness centers. This should be construed broadly to avoid any impacts to the delivery of healthcare. c) veterinary care and other healthcare services for animals, including boarding; d) food, shelter, and social services and other necessities of life for economically disadvantaged or otherwise needy individuals, such as those residing at shelters; e) mortuary services, including funeral homes, crematoriums, and cemetery workers, except that not more than 10 persons at a time shall be allowed into a funeral, visitation, or wake; f) home-based care for seniors, adults, or children; g) law enforcement, emergency management, public safety, first responder, emergency dispatch, and security; h) hazardous materials handling and cleanup; i) agriculture and food cultivation, including farming, livestock, and fishing; j) grocery stores, food banks, convenience stores, and other establishments engaged in the retail sale of canned food, dried goods, fresh fruits and vegetables, pet supply, fresh meats, fish and poultry, and any other household products, such as cleaning and personal care products, provided that farmers markets and produce stands may provide drive-through or carryout services only. This includes stores that sell groceries and also sell other non-grocery products and products necessary to maintain the safety, sanitation, and essential operation of residences and persons, and includes the retail sale and distribution of alcohol. k) restaurant, carryout, drive-through, and delivery services. Drive-through and delivery services provided they are food services. Pickup or take-away food services provided by a school, provided that no more than 10 people shall be within the establishment and physical distancing of a minimum of 6 feet is maintained. l) energy, electricity, petroleum, natural, and propane gas acquisition, production, generation, processing, storage, distribution, and retail distribution. m) waste and wastewater maintenance and operation of infrastructure, including processing, treatment, conveyance, and distribution. n) logistics and transportation of goods and people, including taxis, rental services, ride share, and private transportation providers and businesses that ship or deliver foods, goods, or services directly to residences. o) freight transportation services, including railroads and rail systems. p) gas stations. q) vehicle repair and maintenance facilities, including vehicle, parts, manufacturers, and suppliers. r) public work support, inspection, and maintenance, including workers such as plumbers, electricians, exterminators, and other service providers, whose services are necessary to maintain safety, sanitation, and essential operation of residences and buildings, essential activities, and essential businesses. s) public infrastructure support and maintenance. t) communications infrastructure support and maintenance, including storefronts that sell or repair communication devices and media services, including radio, television, and print. u) information technology development, management, support, and security, including client service centers. v) inspection services for construction functions of new facilities and/or maintenance of existing buildings. w) hotels, motels, and bed and breakfasts, provided that they may not offer dining and services, and no more than 10 people shall be congregated in any one area, including the lobby area. x) critical manufacturing of materials and products needed for medical supply chains, transportation, energy, communications, food, and agriculture, to include food and beverage processing, wholesaling, storage, warehousing, and distribution; chemical manufacturing, water and wastewater treatment, emergency services in the defense industrial base. letter y. Legal and critical financial services, including banks and property services, including supportive activities such as appraisals, title services, and inspections. z) lawn and landscaping services and grass, weed, and vegetation removal necessary to protect the health, safety, and sanitation of the community. a) building supply stores. b) lawn or mats, dry cleaners, and laundry service providers. c) residential care facilities, including nursing homes and group homes. d) mailing and shipping services, including post office boxes. e) educational services to support distance learning activities. f) childcare facilities providing services that enable employees exempted in this order to work as permitted. To the extent possible, childcare should be carried out in stable groups, preferably with 10 or fewer. Stable means that the same 10 or fewer children are in the same group each day. Children should not change from one group to another. If more than one group of children is cared for at one facility, each group should be in a separate room. Groups should not mix with each other, and childcare providers should remain solely with one group of children. g) religious activities to support distance and/or virtual services provided fewer than 10 persons are in attendance. h) any business involving the possession, transfer, sale, transportation, storage, display, or use of firearms or ammunition. i) minimum basic operations of otherwise nonessential businesses, provided that employees comply with physical distancing requirements as defined herein to the extent possible while carrying out such operations and which shall be limited to the following: number 1 The minimum necessary activities to maintain the value of the business's inventory and facilities, ensure security, process payroll and employee benefits, or for related function. And 2 The minimum necessary activities to facilitate employees of the business being able to continue to work remotely from their residences, place of rest, or elsewhere; 3 Direct support services necessary to ensure an essential business activity will not have to cease operation. Number 3 Physical distancing requirements includes maintaining at least a 6-foot physical distance from other individuals, washing hands with soap and water for at least 20 seconds as frequently as possible, or using hand sanitizer, regularly cleaning high-touch surfaces, and not shaking hands. Section 4 Penalty for Violation. Any person who shall violate this section shall upon conviction or plea of guilty be fined not more than $199 or sentenced to a term of imprisonment for up to 10 days or both. Section 5 Effective Date, Duration, and Availability. A) This order shall be effective at 12:01 a.m. on Sunday, March 29, 2020, and shall be in effect until modified or rescinded. B) The city clerk shall make this order available to the public. And now, I guess, we're going to adopt. Adopted and approved by the Board of Aldermen and emergency meeting held on March 28, 2020, at the City Hall here in Forsyth.
Motion to approve the second reading of the Bill Number 525, Emergency Stay-at-Home Ordinance Due to COVID-19 Coronavirus Outbreak and to enact.
Second motion.
All in favor? Roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Now, is it appropriate just to kind of point out some of the specifics that'll probably come up? I mean, I don't know. Does our food market, is it still in operation? It said food market in there as long as they have a drive-throughs. What I'm saying is, do we need to have somebody go out and tell Casey's now that they have to arrange to make sure there's no more than 25 or 10 people in their building, and we have to tell Country Market that they have to figure out a way to not allow more than 10 people in there?
No, that doesn't state that.
It's not that? We don't even have to worry about 25% occupancy in any building now?
We don't have that stated in here.
They just need to try to stay.
6-foot distancing.
All right. I'm just worried that people in the outskirts that are following this, that have already said Casey's a mess, Country Market's a mess, that this will be kind of undervalued a little bit.
I think after we pass this, that we should make an effort to meet with those places and talk to them about the safety of 10 or less and the distance away. It's not in here that we can force them to do anything. It's recommended that they follow these.
Right. I'm just thinking about other folks saying, well, if they can't take care of Casey's and Country Market, why am I required to do this?
Casey, Country Market, say a lot.
We need to deal with them, I think.
Okay. We can do that.
Yes. Those were the big ones I was worried about because I'm the same. If I grab by and see 50 cars in the parking lot, a bunch of people in there, well, come on, people. What can you do about this? I think we should try to do something about that.
We can talk to those business owners.
It would be good if possible, we can't force them to do it, but if they had someone at the door.
Yes.
Talking to people.
Yes. It would be awesome.
And limiting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because those are the only places I noticed in town where people really, to me, everybody's doing a great job.
Except for the park, which we shut down the playgrounds at.
Yeah, but the park for fishing and all that still needs to be.
It's still open, yeah. It's just the playgrounds that are closed. And so, yeah, that should help with that part of it, so.
Are we going to leave the campground open, even if the water doesn't come up? Are we going to leave the campground open, even if the water doesn't come up?
Um, that would be, you would need to talk to your city administrator on that, whether we want to go ahead with that. Right now, we are, because they are, you know, they're distanced apart.
Right.
And so, yeah. And so, anyway.
I might just make a comment. All state park campgrounds have now closed.
They have.
People that have had reservations are being refunded, their reservations, including the fee to make the reservation.
Okay. Well, we can close it.
I'm just saying that's what they're doing throughout the state of Missouri is state parks.
Well, we want to follow suit for that, pretty much, if you, you know, so. But we are keeping the rest of the park open for fishing.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
That was in here.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Okay. So.
Okay. Okay, how about, can we do something? Do we still have a loitering problem here in the parking lot up here at night with kids?
Sometimes.
We've, we've already discussed that. That will need to be broken up.
Okay.
I mean, they can sit in their cars away from each other, but as far as they're all gathered together in a group, it's not going to happen. So.
Can't have a group in a car, either.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, that's true too. Yeah, exactly.
You're probably not, are you going to stop a van full of family members? Probably not. What if the van full of family members parks in Country Mart parking lot and loads six kids to go in the Country Mart parking lot? I'm, I'm not saying we should do something, but when people come up and ask us this, what collective answer are we giving them is what I'm saying.
We would strongly urge that all, they leave all children at home when they do their shopping, because children tend to, I mean, it's going to, especially if there's five or six kids, it's really hard to keep them from wandering or into other people and, and it's, you know, it's kind of, this is a learning experience for children right now. They've never, you know, had to be secluded away from people, so this is all new for pretty much everybody.
Yeah. All right. Those are all things that I just know I've been asked a bunch of questions.
I know.
Well, are we ready to adjourn?
I think we should adjourn if no one else has any comments.
Okay.
I said.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, folks.